Let's call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Polly. Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Blavich here, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Excuse the absence.
Trustee Crawl.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yeah. At this point in time, is there a motion to adopt the agenda unless there are any substitutions, corrections, or amendments about to present? Motion on the table and support further discussion of the agenda. Saying none. All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye. What was the saying? Moving forward to public comment, this is the first opportunity for public comment. This public comment hints to any of the business on the agenda as presented. If there's any public comment online, please use the bottom past bar under the ellipsis to identify or raise your hand, so it's send a message. Seeing no public comment, we will move forward. Yep, is there a motion?
Motion to enter into closed session to consult with the township attorney regarding trial strategy in the water and sewer rate litigation pending before Alpena County Circuit Court. Pursuant to MCL one five dot two six eight one E.
Is there support to the motion? We have motion and support, trustee left. With support. Further discussion? Saying none.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. We're now officially in closed session. Well, we're officially back in open session. Moving forward with new business. Business one, budget adjustments, yeah, before you have budget adjustments. I'd entertain a motion if there's any questions, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have support. Or it's been moved and supported, further discussion. Saying none, roll call, please.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. The next item of business is for building code changes. These are principally at this point in time, I'm not full on building codes, these are for the plumbing, mechanical, and electrical codes. Plumbing and mechanical to update to twenty twenty one. Michigan codes and the electrical code to bring up to twenty twenty three per NFPA seventy. And it is a recommendation of our building official Kevin Pauling to adopt these code changes effective March twelfth. Actually, the the codes themselves become effective March twelfth, this recommendation that is our motion make these code changes effective March thirteenth. The day following.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to approve the plumbing, mechanical, and electrical code updates and changes effective date March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. By clerk Blavich, is there support?
Or?
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion?
This is just a statewide standard, right? We haven't modified it, okay.
This is the most recent version or something, okay, okay.
Correct. So with that being said, roll call.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. The next item of business, Michelle, I'll let you take.
Our election inspectors who work very hard to make our elections successful have not had a raise in five years. So I am recommending that they get a dollar an hour raise, bring chairman to sixteen, co-chair to fourteen, inspectors to thirteen. And to increase their training from twenty five dollars of the flat fee to thirty.
I'll make that motion. We have a motion on the table by trustee Polly to follow the recommendation of clerk Blavich. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion, trustee Reiner?
The only question I have is whether I should even vote on this. Because I am one.
You will not be working any elections this year.
Because of Tuesdays.
If you are on the ballot, I don't know if you're gonna be on the ballot or not, but if. But if you, I mean.
So I can vote on it now?
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
You have a duty, but thank you for the point of clarification. With that being said, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. The next item of business is a proposal from TRC for three thousand three hundred dollars. This is a retroactive, this would be my recommendation for set expense to utilize ARPA monies, the same as we did with the original. Ben Jimmin Builders quote for the internal modifications of Northside Fire Department. This was the point of failure on the roof. These activities actually have already taken place, given the opportunity during demolition and their close proximity. And it is my recommendation to move forward with the expenditure for TRC roofing at the cost of three thousand three hundred dollars.
Sorry, even done.
To utilize ARPA money, it's the same as we expended for the internal projects that are on the roof.
And this is a failure of new roof?
So originally in hindsight, the design for wrapping the roof did not include what I think they could consider dog houses. Which the HVAC units sit on, which was the point of infiltration of the water damage. These now have been. Fully wrapped. HVAC units have been raised and accounted for. And so at this point in time, there are no, with the exception of one issue on a knee wall that they came and caught immediately following that. I think they responded in thirty minutes. Our roof is as sound as it's ever been.
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to move forward with it, quote for three thousand three hundred dollars to utilize ARPA monies. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Yes.
They're literally gonna pick these three units up, do what they gotta do underneath them. Put them back down. They gotta do everything, because you're gonna lift this up, there's gotta be some disconnections and all, they're gonna do all that.
It's already done. And they didn't have to, they actually had their own lift, they pulled them up, the the five inches to put womanized lumber to account for the variance. Wrapped the entire thing, set them right back down.
Also already done?
Yeah. We had, I forget which state, we had a weather opportunity where they're actually just down the street at Eagle Engineering finishing up their roof. So instead of waiting potentially a month. Which would have then slowed the internal progress down, which we have an item coming up on that business as well. I I looked at that as we have an opportunity to keep going in a positive direction.
Did their insurance carrier ever come by?
And. You know that I found all the all directions.
Yeah, I know, I I.
And it's frustrating, that is.
Very.
We we still have the issue that no matter what an insurance position was, we we had the issue that we had to.
No, I I understand that. It just seems to me that there was some negligence to to not see this.
So with no other discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. The next item of business is a fixed disposal asset list, which includes. Number one, our two thousand seven GMC three quarter ton truck in DPW. It has met its life expectancy. And you'll actually see the notes in the labor for the start of the repair. The potentials of cost to update and piece of piece of machinery running that has outlived its life expectancy. It'd be my recommendation to add this to the fixed disposal asset list. And as well as. Items two through six, which are all property based. And these are holdings that. For whatever reason, the township has acquired. Some of them buildable, some of them mostly not. So I'm open to having conversations with some, but these are properties I'd rather have back on the tax roll. Than sitting vacant in land, some of them are landlocked between other private properties and have no infrastructure and. Literally, as you see on number four, I had to get clarification to our assessor, because. Number four has on that parcel number somehow illegally had a fixed Worth Road lot one sixty eight in the divided subdivision. Which is one mile from our Southside Fire Department, we are not getting rid of the Southside Fire Department for a point of clarification. But this one triangular shaped parcel was affixed to a parcel that had no affiliation and was in a planted subdivision. So moving forward, my my thought process is with the granting of of this board, I reach out to a budding property owners. And find positive means, there are no stipulations as to property values since they were typically gifted. Or given to the township at zero cost, so my thought process is better on the tax rule. Than not sitting on the tax.
Is that the normal procedure, the protocol to. To contact adjoining properties?
There is no, I I've looked for and I've talked with at length with our assessor and Timbal about various methodologies for dispersal of property. Through MTA, there is no.
All right.
There is no.
I know the county has a different protocol. I just wasn't sure if the township had.
We we don't, it's literally, it's it's, we're following our protocols by adding it to the fixed disposal asset list. And if you grant the permission to get rid of it through those methodologies, then I follow the best way for it.
Makes sense. Now, the other question I have is on the 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 truck, is that just sitting someplace?
That is now been completely gutted, in this year's budget, I have actually allocated funds for a replacement. And so we're gonna be looking into that.
Taking off the insurance and?
That will be removed from the insurance right now. My approach to both the previous DPW van that has been sitting in an oxidated state in our backyard. As well as this, that right now scrap metal in terms of gross vehicle weight tonnage is at, at least the last time I checked was at two hundred and forty dollars. A gross vehicle ton, which will actually get us more value than if we try to sell it.
Can you weld a bunch of stuff?
I can get some deal on stick chrome and give you one back of an offer, trustee Lappin. Yes. Trustee Reiner.
On the truck, I think we spent some money on this about two, three years ago, maybe.
Yep.
And and at that time, we discussed whether it was worth putting money into, so it's now at the point where.
It's.
I know where we can get another fix out for, right within our fleet, but anyway. The. On the land, if there's any lots here that are developable.
I'll have that conversation about the potentials of the county land bank, and so that's part of the conversation, you and I, as a sitting member and liaison to that board. There is one and has a potential, and so.
Does that mean that you'd put it into the land bank instead of trying to notify adjoining neighbors?
It has a potential, so yeah, but with your land bank, it has a unique caveat as to finding and acquiring. Direct opportunity for buildings, which inherently then makes them a taxable asset on our roll. So that was, there's only one of those parcels that would meet that standard as a potential. And as Russ sits on the county land bank board, that's a conversation.
Yeah, it's a, it's not a county entity, it's a separate entity. It was explained sort of by Lenny.
Yeah, I did that up in.
You read that meeting?
Where they, where they, they developed a separate entity.
So I I would, I would ask this board to grant me the opportunity to dispose of all the the assets on this list appropriately.
I'll make the note.
I'll support. We have a motion by trustee Reiner, supported by trustee Lappin, can move forward with. The fixed disposal asset list, any further discussion? Saying none, roll call.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Yeah, and actually you can see in the packet the. Or your own reference, it's actually kind of a. Here. But the plat was actually, this one last little sliver that got cut off. And it's behind. Shabat Auto Maintenance on Worth Road. Completely landlocked.
Where's he showing here?
Yeah. Cut off, I can actually show you. Our our software, I I wasn't able to kind of cut and paste the the right side of the screen.
Sort of behind.
No, it's just to the right.
So the page is useless.
Pretty close.
Just imagine.
Close your eyes, say if you're on the right side of that screen, it is a little bit further.
Okay, let's keep moving.
I appreciate that, nice job, nice job. So moving forward, the next item of business is the quote for the Northside Fire Station. This is actually, yeah, and so his software, one, we don't have to pay one dollar to have a discussion. And so it came down to open cell or closed cell spray foam. And I would implore, right now, we have everything removed from the ceiling, which is actually the roof in the fire department. Minus the restroom. So before they put in the drop ceiling that we've already approved. I look at the opportunity and it's the recommendation. Of our building official to go with the three thousand three hundred and twenty six dollar closed cell phone. Because it will actually create a vapor barrier on top of that.
So this is just spray that that you spray, I I'm okay, I'm like, what in the world?
Yeah, it's actually quite fascinating, it's quite fascinating, honestly.
Stuff that grows.
Yep. But not exponentially, closed cell is is more of a true. A vapor seal. When you have a, God bless, flat roofs in northern Michigan. But it eliminates greater potential, has a higher R value.
Yeah.
Which will actually exceed commercial standards by Michigan Building Code for flat roofs at this point in time with. The spray foam on the inside, so it's my recommendation also that the building official who walked over. And if you have time, please go next door and take a look at where that is. This will actually be able to get accomplished in a timely manner following this meeting, so it's my recommendation to move forward. My recommendation is to move forward with the closed cell cost of three thousand three hundred and twenty six dollars for nine hundred square feet of closed cell phone. In the Northside Fire Department utilizing ARPA.
So he's quoted and then added him together.
Yeah.
Either closed cell or open cell.
Software, he apologized, actually, before I had, before Kevin was back. I was actually looking at it and didn't really see, I'm not a builder. So I didn't see any massive inherent difference, just a cost savings mechanism of nearly a thousand dollars. My thought was to go with the open cell, so we did separate that, but after having Mr. Polly look at it.
He recommends.
He recommends the closed.
So the builder's recommending open cell.
He's, it's, the builder's open, this is actually going through Building Express as a sub.
Oh.
Of that, so this was actually their cost direct, but his software actually just tallied it automatically, so.
Okay.
There is no additional two thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars in that we sent, nor is there an additional dollar to have a discussion about.
So you recommend both Kevin's recommendation rather than the builder's?
That is correct. Of three thousand.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the recommendation of closed cell phone, support by trustee Polly.
The only question I have is, is it in this budget here?
Yes. Yep, it will actually take place before the drop ceiling and all the electrical get finalized.
Will be before April one.
Correct. So. Any discussion? Fine, and roll call, please.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward is. We are actually getting close to our new pump or tanker, getting on the assembly line. Which should be arriving, it sounds like, in the early parts of April.
Really?
So that is good news. Now, the reality is, with our treasurer gone, I've kind of grabbed the reins of discussing what the financing options are for the remaining. We have just over three hundred and fifty four thousand dollars that we have to move the fire equipment village. That are going towards this cost that the board voted on of not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The total cost actually came out to four hundred forty nine thousand nine hundred and sixty three dollars.
What did it come out to?
Same three bucks.
Forty nine thousand. So. We have a disparity of ninety one thousand rough aggregate numbers, so I contacted Jerry Smith with, you know, Kona. He presented. A layout, and it's not in here, but we had terms of one year, three years, and five years as presented. For that ninety one thousand remainder, Tim worked on resolutions. But I think what would behoove us at this point in time, given the consideration and the financial. Aspects of what are, what is the board's will, one.
I was gonna say, we have.
You know, we have ARPA money, but.
What's the interest rate?
So at one year it was six percent, two years was six point two five, and three, five years was six point five percent.
Penalty for early payoff?
No penalty for early payoff, but the reality is the general fund's gonna be holding that now. There is no monies available in public safety. And so why would we hold a note? Clerk Blavich and I have been playing a a wonderful game of tennis. And the more I think about it and the more I digest it, why would we extend and accrue interest? When we can actually, we have currently the means to pay it in full. And that is through our.
When do we have to, when do we have to spend that ARPA money?
Twenty twenty six is the final recording date, even by the. Even though there was a final rule that was published eighteen months ago, they are on their fourth amendment of the final rule, just as of Monday of this week. But that termination and expenditure earmarked date is still remain same and unchanged of December of twenty twenty six.
So that saves us just under fifty seven hundred if we don't have an interest cost. Per year, I I figured it at six point two five on a one year, but yeah.
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 I would say we have the ability, we just pay it and be done.
That is definitely a part of it, that says we could, we could invest that money, probably. Make it, make it.
We're getting about five percent.
Yeah.
On the investment.
So it's basically.
So why would we pay six and a half percent or six percent?
I I'm open to the discussion, the reality is, public safety is not gonna hold that note.
Yeah, no.
And so, does general fund wanna have legacy costs even as short term as it is?
Yeah.
With the accrual of interest. In comparison to the last apparatus that we brought on, that our APR has gone up roughly two and a half percent. As a long rate, I think we we secured that note at four percent or at three point nine percent.
What is the rate that we're getting on that?
On the investment?
On the investment?
It's about five percent.
All right, so we're making about at least a hundred thousand, we'd make five grand.
So it's a swing of about.
There's a.
Eleven thousand, ten, ten five, something like that.
Say it again?
It's a swing, we save the interest and we make five.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a, we net out a loss of what, seven hundred bucks or so?
Annual.
Annual, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus the extra paper.
Yeah, I'd say roughly you're looking at, we're splitting hairs at roughly twelve hundred dollars.
And and that ARPA money will burn through the majority of.
That will take the.
We'll have about twenty six thousand.
Do we have anything else in the pipeline that we.
Oh.
Use that money for?
Well, we, I mean, there's no shortage.
I get that, but I mean, of the, of the need list.
This is where we need our CIP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But at this point in time.
Is that being worked on at the?
Commission, have they worked on the CIP?
No. So the reality is, we have one to three years or five years, but yeah, norm, I'm sorry.
Is is our other fire truck paid for?
Yes.
That's done deal over.
All of our fire, everything's paid.
Yep.
I mean, that one we have for ten years, that's.
Last year was the final year that that was on our books.
My sister.
Right.
And that was done through the millage.
No, that was done on what we found out, not the right.
Just a note. It's definitely a part of me that thinks that, that.
That no, it wasn't paid for through the millage, but.
No. The other, the newer engine.
That's the one I thought you.
No, we're talking about the one that. That was on like a ten year installment. No, it was bought brand new.
So yeah, we we. I mean, it's, it it's it's not losing a cost.
So we're we're kicking this out of ARPA money. And we have that money, that's, and it's not gonna go away. Where are we?
Would have, if we, if if the board's will is to utilize ARPA money, I think roughly we'd have about twelve thousand dollars remaining in ARPA funds.
Well, we have to look at what we've done with our ARPA funds.
We've actually dispersed it quite well.
Yeah, I mean, we did a water tower.
Really good job of utilizing that money, there's no question.
Yeah.
And so.
And I think this would be a good investment.
I I tend to lean that way, just because when we're really looking at how much interest are we gonna bear?
Yeah, I'm also looking at from a safety net standpoint.
Yeah, I mean.
We'd have a clean slate when we're done.
Yeah. I mean, if something else comes, you know, we we need a new air conditioning unit.
There's.
I need something else.
Can't have his magic money. No, it's never real money.
No, it's fighting bucks. So. So what we have, I mean, I I guess this is the conversation. To me, I don't know if it makes sense to carry even on a short term a note, when we can just be done with it.
I'd rather not have a liability.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I.
Yeah.
It makes, one, it will make it cleaner on our books as well, because now we're not carrying that legacy cost and that liability forward.
And there's no benefit to us.
There really isn't.
And and the, you know, we're talking about a pickup to replace the old beater in the water department. But the water department will have to carry that.
The water department is an enterprise, not.
Yes.
Space entity.
So that, and we can't mix the two.
Nope, there is not. So.
Well, then I guess, in the interest of moving it along, I guess I would make the motion that we. Take the, the balance, the fire truck and utilize ARPA funds to. Pay off that, so that we don't have any kind of debt.
Yeah, it's just rough, rough numbers, we're ninety one thousand and has a.
So we'll. I'll support that.
We have motion and support on the table, further discussion? Saying none, roll call.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, that concludes our normal. We are now moving into the workshop function of this gathering. And what you have before, everybody has a hard copy, as is denoted by a blue star in the upper right hand corner. This was modified after my discussion with Chief Hanson last night. And I noticed he pointed out some things, and Michelle pointed out one thing that needed to be back and entered into it. So before you have the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. This is in our first rodeo, so I'm open to however you want to proceed. We are, as it states currently, net positive, I believe, a hundred and fifty in general, twenty six in public safety. And. Sixty five four in the enterprise fund.
Anything that we just did with that ARPA money has no impact on this.
No.
No. No, well, we won't be carrying, so in terms of revenue, we won't be carrying the. On the first page, one oh one zero 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 six nine nine, that was the rough aggregate. So that would actually be reduced by these expenditures, so that would be a.
So that, so that one twenty seven five then becomes.
Roughly twelve thousand.
Yeah, twelve thousand, some odd dollars.
So I I will bring that back as, if we get into recommended, I'll bring whatever changes need to happen at that point.
Well, I think that would be a pass through to the, to the. It'll show off.
When are we getting the tanker?
It's right now, it's scheduled for, well, he said, late March, but yesterday's email said that it was the next to be on the assembly line. So my anticipation would be the the first half of April into the.
Okay, so.
So it won't reflect in this budget.
So that will show. Transfer in. On the public safety.
Yeah.
The ARPA.
Still, I mean, it's just gonna net out.
Right, it's gonna go.
But the number, our revenue will go down. But our expenditures will go down.
And that number was ninety one, you said Nate?
Uh, variables between uh what we have to.
So that leaves us thirty six then.
But then we also disapprove of uh thirty three, thirty three and thirty three, basically. So sixty six hundred dollars. Yeah, so.
Oh, I think I have it right.
The other question I had, and you brought it up, and I meant to respond to it in, in our last discussion, was. Uh. The work we've done on our water towers, as I recall, since I've been on here, we've done two water towers and refurbished them completely. Correct?
Correct.
What's the status for our third? We have a third.
Uh, the status is actually, that's part of the USDA RV, um, because this was part of. Two years of uh failures through the uh. Drinking Water State Revolving Fund ask. Um. We weren't even in this years, we pushed the exact same application with the thirty percent uh increase to uh. Labor and materials uh that were fairly standardized in, in the field. Um, we weren't even in the funded range. This past uh cycle. Um, so the discussion has, and the board has already approved, um, the rotation into overarching USDA RV Rural Development Fund ask. Um, I had a meeting with our, our engineers uh last week. And right now, so to your point in question of the third tower on US twenty three south. Um, that is actually still uh on the uh rural development, because that's part of what they like to see is capacity aspects. Um, so that updating is on that ask, but that may actually be broken out into. Several years of ask, rather than one big ask upfront, so that's still in the works, but it is on the docket.
But it's serviceable right now.
Oh yeah, there's really nothing, it's, it's more um. Just meeting eagle standards for when they change their priorities and having filters on the screens and screens on filters. And making sure lights are working and that.
But it's again, it's, it would be helpful to have a CIP that would.
Yeah.
That we should plan on it, yes.
And so. But it is in the USDA.
Is we, is legal divided up amongst all the different departments?
That it is.
Yeah.
Um, I, I recognize that this is. A, a working document, and I recognize that some of these revenue streams are subject to change. But on the. State revenue sharing.
Yep.
That's a pretty specific number.
Yeah, that was actually by uh MTI conferred with our legal counsel through MTA.
So that's a real.
This is, this is as realistic of a number that can be generated at this point in time.
So over the course of the last few years, that revenue sharing is where we thought. Because of COVID, for example, that that was gonna take a big hit, and in fact is taking a big bump up.
Yeah, cause it's principally based upon sales tax. Um, and so that has actually gone up.
I'll say.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, in our, in our breakout, the misnomer is that we just have it generically stated as. Uh, state revenue sharing, sales tax, there's two components to revenue sharing at state level, it's. It's city, village, township revenue sharing, and then also constitutional revenue sharing. Constitutional revenue sharing has actually increased. State revenue sharing has minusculely increased, uh, it's almost plateaued, so, but we don't break them out that way, we just have one law.
Yeah, that's how we're.
But that is. As specific as I can get.
How, does that come as, as a one chunk, or does that come sort of?
Every other month.
Every other month, okay.
Yes, so that is the most defined number that I was able to ascertain through the Department of Treasury, MTA. Um. And so.
All right.
It seems fairly specific, doesn't it?
Sure does, yeah, that wasn't rounded off.
No. And no, and as always with revenue, I try to be. Very light in my anticipation, cause it's better to, to under anticipate.
Yeah.
Over anticipate.
And I suppose we recognize. As, as we've all received our. Uh, tax assessments, that, that, that uh. But that three ninety five is probably a pretty light number. Well, probably not pretty light, it's probably light by two or three percent maybe.
I, therein, uh, I is actually, I originally put in forecasted three percent upon our amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but not knowing, so I mean, one of the things there is, and everybody got their, their assessments. Uh, principally, the majority are looking at is the state multiplier of five percent.
Yeah.
Um, but what we have as a corrective action to the AMR is a reduction of. Land values in the four figures to twenty five land values that are state supported. And so we've actually had to correct our books, um, we had valuations of property in our municipality a mile away from Lake Huron that had Lake Huron shore frontage calculations. Um, we, I mean, I just presented a, a parcel that was in a platted subdivision, a hundred year old platted subdivision. That was affiliated with a non-subclap mile away. So our, our records are actually getting to the point of actually being. The most accurate. Uh, that the township tax role has ever been, coming into three, the third year of a contract. Um, and so. There's some unknowns, and so I would still err on the side of light and be happily uh surprised when. We're two to three percent over that four oh three, uh, four ninety.
Well, I mean.
As originally forecasted, but I, I guess.
I think it's like we have in the past, I think would. Would kinda make sense, at least to me anyhow. Is to not spend a lot of time on the revenue side, cause it kinda is what it is, but to maybe go down the. Maybe go down the.
Well, I mean, I, I guess I ask this body, um, as we go department by department or?
I kinda like when we do department by department, and if you have anything you wanna pull out of a department, otherwise.
So.
Moving it along.
Yep, so onto the Board of Trustees, um. Uh, this was uh the increases uh associated with that, we're back to the compensation commission. Otherwise, everything was um fairly straightforward and balanced. Uh, Department one seven one. Same exact thing. Um.
So I guess, I guess the. From a, from an optical standpoint, I guess. Um. When, when did we make the motion? To, has it been a year since we've adjusted the, the, the salaries of the, of, of you guys, of all of us?
Every March.
What, was it March of last year that we did that? Really? Wow.
How, how is Cali?
I gotta slow the calendar some.
And just so everyone knows, at the budget hearing, we do not do those.
Resolutions.
Resolutions anymore for each. Of our salaries. Because it was already determined by the Compensation Committee.
All right, well, I just wondered, because it was like. Geez, it seems like we just did that. So I just didn't want.
A year.
Yeah, wow.
And the Compensation Commission only do it every two years.
Two years.
Right, yes, all right, okay, then that answers that question.
Okay, any questions in Department one seven one? Not moving forward to two fifteen. Uh. I'll get right to the cut and the chase here is the only big difference that you're gonna see is all the way till we get. Cause it's pretty much boilerplate until we get to uh two six two, and that is elections. Um, and so you're gonna see significant upticks, um, but. Inherently, you're gonna have nine times as much cost when you.
Nine days of early voting.
Nine times more voting opportunity and invoice. Um.
Well, except for only one, running one precinct.
Right, we still have people here and. It's still eight hours a day, or eight and a half hours a day that they're here, cause they have to open and close and.
Right, but we're otherwise running what, four, three, six, or three?
Five, five.
Five, okay.
All right.
And with the. With August and November, we have more people working.
Yeah.
Elections than we did at the presidential primary, we'll have more in August and more in November, cause there's a higher turnout.
And we just approved this light up pick and. They were.
Right.
Yeah, so that'll have to be adjusted.
No, actually, I kinda knew that.
Oh, okay.
Forecasted.
All right.
Trustee Polly.
And the assessors, uh, so we're paying.
Assessor's back to his contract and that still has, uh, it's right at two twenty, um. And we're on par, all of our AMR findings have been corrected, uh, we're ahead of schedule on our, coming into our third year of a contract at twenty percent a year. Uh, so in two years, uh, our entire township will actually have been updated.
So.
Yeah, by all means.
I just. All of our hardware, our software and all those sorts of things, we don't anticipate buying new. Computers or, or, or. We've, we've in- incorporated the cost of the, 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 the software costs, the um.
Software costs are all allocated per department, yep.
Yeah, so we're not anticipating anything.
So each department had put their request in and.
Yep.
Into, okay.
Every department had its submitted, yeah, and like I said. As of last night, I, I changed, the only changes to the document before you are in public safety.
So are we in elections after six two, or where are we?
Uh, that was the last department outside of just a generic question of how do we forecast the software and hardware?
Yeah, I jumped backwards, sorry.
Oh.
No, we're, we're gonna go to elections.
Uh, we're at elections, um, this is. Kind of what we just discussed, um. It's, it seems to jump off the page and rightfully so, um.
How do you come from the state at all on this?
Only on the presidential primary, and they did provide us with a new early voting laptop. And a new early voting tabulator, and those are probably altogether worth about eight to nine thousand. If we would have had to pay for it.
Operating supplies is a significant.
Yeah, five thousand for copies now, tell. Am I reading that right, instead of a thousand?
Except forty.
Forty thousand.
We have to send out a lot of.
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah, that's up there, but that's salaries.
Ballot, we have to pay for the ballots, it's expensive.
Yeah, wow, so that, so that's.
Well, because we didn't have any, we had one election last year as opposed to. The number of elections we're having this year, we're having big elections this year. We also have to pay for the software programming and all that.
Wow.
Yeah, so we have two more elections this.
We have two more elections, August and November.
I've been, I, I heard on the news last night, I was listening to some other place. Uh, in fact, I even heard it on California, the, the people really barking about the, 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 the costs and. And how the federal government is stepping in to sort of try to help offset some of these things, so this is clear, clearly on evidence.
I mean, we now have a permanent ballot list, so we have to mail out, anybody on that permanent ballot list automatically gets mailed a ballot.
How do you know if those people are?
Alive.
Alive, yeah.
Oh, here come the meals.
Yeah, um. As soon as the county. And the state are notified of a death. It is notified in QBF, the Qualified Voter File, and we received notification. Within days, we had to pull some ballots. Because. Absentee voters voted and then unfortunately passed away, so their ballots were pulled, reject, we had to reject them.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, good.
Look, show up for early voting as you get older.
Yeah. So that obviously accounts for why the postage is just going nuts too.
Uh-huh.
Oh, yeah.
So if you vote early and you die quick, you know, your vote don't count.
Vote counts.
Unless you're.
Only if it's absentee. Cause we don't count those till election day.
So if you vote early.
No, you can, you can early vote in person and once your, once your ballots in that tabulator, I don't, I can't pull it, cause I don't know.
Okay, early vote, yeah.
Early dilate.
So we have early voting, absentee voting and election day voting. There's three different times with track a ballot.
So to keep this moving.
Wow. So, all right, well, you know, that was, that, those are just some things that really jump.
Oh, they jump up, yeah, it's.
Just for the presidential primary, Haley and I worked nineteen days in a row.
Yeah.
And Sundays and Saturdays?
Saturdays and Sunday, yes.
I really.
I love you.
We really appreciate it.
So next, next Department two six.
Like that was the theory.
So John Hancock.
Yep. So building and grounds, um. Therein, anticipated, uh, we do have HVAC concerns, um, so you'll see that there's adequate funding. Um, we had, I, I had a quote, uh, just to have a baseline idea of what that expense would be for this facility. Um, last year, and that was. Roughly, uh, I believe it was. Thirty thousand dollars, uh, so I anticipated increases there. Um. But we have uh. Some upcoming projects that I'll be bringing towards the board of, for grounds maintenance and repair as well. Um, henceforth, uh. Building improvements, maintenance and grounds maintenance are adequately funded. Um, obviously with the maintenance and repair building, um, you see with the activities and amended budget preview that's in, in outlier. As to uh expenses and uh activities that have already taken place, but. All in all, uh, fairly straightforward. Um. Liquor law enforcement is straightforward. Um, that is just a, a derived uh. Allocation from the state or doing inspection services. When uh Lindell. Going, moving forward is doing our, our liquor inspections. Uh, building inspector. The only thing in this is under, I funded in eight zero one professional and contractual service. The cost for Mr. Pauli is at forty eight thousand dollars, I actually funded this temporarily at eighty eight, accounting for forty thousand additional. Whether or not for a buildings and grounds maintenance person, we look at the potentials of. Uh, either a subcontracted aspect or bringing them on part time, so there's pros and cons.
So what's the salary payable of thirty five thousand?
I funded it actually both ways, because one way could be for, well, my thought process to this was originally was to potentially look at a full time position. Of part time doing buildings and grounds maintenance, and the other half would have been doing uh. Code enforcement. And ordinance enforcement, which would. Take some of the weight off of Kevin and I getting out in the field doing ordinance enforcement. Um, so I funded actually, I have a part time person in salary pale, if we decide to go that way, otherwise we'll have the ability to amend that budget. Or if we go both ways, I have a, a point of contact with a former uh trooper. Uh, that does uh ordinance enforcement in some of our southern uh townships. Uh, so I have to reach out to him and see what kind of a cost that includes on an annual basis, but that, especially on the enforcement aspects. That would be um, kind of a, a very similar contract that we have with Kevin Paul. So I find both.
All right, so that means that. The building inspector. Department. Could be off. Pretty dramatically.
Could be overfunded.
Yeah, so I mean.
Yeah, by potentially.
By fifty grand or.
Thirty, forty grand.
But. We have to remember that anything we. Revenues we take in the building, so it has to stay in the building.
So both of those functions would still be by Public Act one ninety nine. Uh, still have to be within that department.
But so, okay, but, but if you subcontracted somebody. Then all of the. All of the uh. Salary payable and ancillary costs associated with salary would, would be eliminated or greatly reduced, okay?
That is.
All right, okay.
But right now it's at a point of flux of. Is this, what is in the best interest of the township? Is it two different people in two different capacities, one being a contractor, one being part time?
So that, that department then. Is essentially self-funded, much like the water department, right? And so. Revenue in stays in, it, it's not a, a general fund.
Well, like sometimes when their years are low. The general fund has to substitute that. Well, like sometimes when their years are low, the general fund has to substitute that.
But it's a loan essentially.
No, it just goes in there.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because they're part of the.
Much like all of our others.
Yeah, yes.
Except for the, what, the enterprise.
The enterprise has to pay their.
The building permits, the primary sources.
Primary, uh.
Hundred and sixty thousand building. So that funds.
They're self-sufficient, most years, they're self.
So we have a.
Covid twenty twenty, they were not.
Yeah, yeah, everybody took.
All right, but 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 when projects are going on, right now we're, we're overfunded, I mean, we're have more funds coming in than.
Yeah, and right now I I'd rather take that opportunity and bring somebody in that can actually lighten the burden of myself uh, on the code enforcement and ordinance enforcement, because that that's just light alone is could be a full time job. And so where do you start?
Um, although this doesn't really become a budget thing, and I I apologize, but if if i- if the township continues its path of growth, then then unless we needed to add staff, then this would become more self-sufficient, be a profit center effectively. And and if they're lean years, that that money couldn't be put in, is, was it put into a fund? Why, I don't know, I'm confused on that.
It should have been put into a fund.
Okay.
But going back, we're just now getting, just as the last year in your motion to actually put, uh, in the enterprise fund, things in, uh, interest accruing funds.
Right.
We're finally doing those things, so I mean, these are some of the growing pains.
Yes, yes, I understand.
Did I ask what the line item three seven one eight oh one is?
Professional and contractual services.
Yeah, what is that?
Uh, that is the contract at forty eight thousand, that is the contract for Kevin Polly, our building official.
Okay, so the thirty eight four and the thirty five thousand, I mean, thirty five is.
Thirty eight fours, Lindell's. And thirty five is for a potential part time.
So we're spending most of that hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you could, what I, what I said earlier is that that there's the potential based upon whether there was a need or if you subcontracted, then somebody that salary payable would be eliminated, and so would the HSA, and so would the health insurance, so.
Yeah, all the ancillary banks. Yeah, so.
But you just have, those ancillaries are on Lynn, so if we hired a full time person, those would increase.
Oh.
So all the friends and the HSA, because that is only covering Lynn's right now.
Yeah.
Kevin is a.
No.
Gotcha, all right.
Kevin's independent contractor?
Yes.
Yeah.
But just a quick pointer, so for Oracle and the building department, uh, the wages are, uh, thirty, thirty eight thousand and the health benefits are twenty, almost twenty two thousand. And that's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's the ancillaries that.
Yeah.
Are.
That must be a family.
It is.
Families are expensive.
Everybody got, what they got family, it's gotta be bad.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
Any other questions in regards to the remainder of page six of nineteen? Now, moving forward. Um, pretty straightforward. We are, uh, the one reduction before you ask the question, uh, Trustee Ryan Hart, I know that you will, on, uh, six oh two eight two zero zero three zero. Um, that was a reduction, we never had an ask, and the reality of the reduction to the South Bay corridor is that would fund their cleanup day, because the township is preparing to drive the, uh, self-bipath expansion principally, so that would be an internal activity and, uh, a function of the corridor. And actually, I just got positive news back from MDOT, uh, towards, uh, tap grant uh, potentials and, uh, our proposal, uh, that are.
We talked about it, I mean.
The road commission, yeah, and I can bring you up to speed on that, I did that yesterday from Heidi Fenu uh, with MDOT, uh, and so those discussions are favorable as to what it was.
Um, why is there such an increase for Thunder Bay Island?
Um, I earmarked that, um, because this is a year they are, uh, with the reduction of South Bay corridor, um, they are actually in the process, one of, uh, engineering uh, are free for potentials of docking, uh, and this would match, uh, a one third cost share of their own money versus what they also made on getting Tuesday. Um, and they're also, this is, uh, there's potential costs unforeseen at this point in time with, uh, hopefully the conclusionary toxic disvital of the conveyance of the remaining one hundred and thirty one acres of the island from Bureau of Land Management. So.
That's a big bump.
Yeah.
I see roads increased to three hundred?
I have roads up to three hundred thousand at this point in time, yes. Because as we're getting ready, I just was at one site where hopefully we're using some of the remaining, uh, monies to do some ditching work on Princeton Avenue. That where, uh, I think everybody in the DPW, including myself, has received at least a dozen calls that there must be a, a broken water main. Um, and it's actually, uh, sumps pumping out of one residence that are flooding entire road and washing out Princeton Avenue.
That, that can't be legal.
Actually, they meet all of that, besides the point of pumping within the right of way, they met all of our legal ordinance standards. There's just no ditch at that point.
Dig out the ditch.
So we're looking at digging out the ditch to across Alver on Glendale. Um, but they meet MDOT's road standards because they're outside of their right of way.
I guess I just thought from the oils and just.
Drive, drive down, I I would implore everybody.
It's been like that for fifty years.
Is that, is that the one that you go low point?
I know, I grew up in the house next to it.
Her parents' house, so it's been, yeah, that whole neighborhoods have water flow issues because there's springs, there's aquifers. I I think honestly, when I, I've never seen a home, a residential home with six discharge lines.
Wow.
To a typical fifteen hundred square foot home.
They're, they're built on.
Six long golf course?
No.
Golf course road, I see them.
Yeah.
I've seen lots of lines coming out of that one on the corner.
And then you'll know where.
Right by the lift station.
So it, now I know this again deviates a little bit, but several years ago when we had that, that flooding, uh, on, you know, condos and all that, this is not a, this is not a, a drain commission issue.
So going historically, um, that issue was looked at, uh, through FEMA, uh, through USDA. Um, when the previous board had engaged the residents, um, everybody was up in arms. Um, and when the residents of that neighborhood, golf course road, Genshin Dow, and into the Princeton subdivision, uh, when they're engaged and told what their cost share would be, um, that issue became very silent.
Yeah, never mind.
So, so the drain commissioner, unfortunately, um, I think that it's an extremely important position in, in municipal government, although Pina County doesn't see it that way. Um, it's hard to make it a drain commission direct correlation issue when we have fissures and sinkholes that you can't predict, um, the year that was in question when it truly flooded. Uh, the next time if you're playing the city course after the second green on your way to the third tee box.
You mean the township, correct.
Yes.
Yes.
The township, of course. It is, but I'm sorry, it's like swinging the, swinging the clubs, it's just ingrained, um. There's actually a corridor to off area the size of this table, and that is a sinkhole. And some of the guys.
Oh, yeah, right.
Right behind your home.
Yeah, right between, uh, right between the third green and the next fourth tee, yeah.
Yeah, four.
It's, it's, it's an easy par three, um, don't lay up, but anyways, uh, that's where that water came. There's also a fissure in the dish line on Gen Shaw, uh, that separate the front and the back nine. Um, that has propensity to flood, that's why you have such an amazingly deep drainage ditch along Gen Shaw to corner depot.
Yeah.
Boy, is that full of tag holders.
And I've asked that that be removed.
That's where I was kind of coming from, is that, is that, can this be mitigated in, in other ways?
That needs some cleaning. That, that, yeah, it's a cleaning in that ditch, but that's a, always a fight between the road commission, township and the city.
Yeah, yeah, because then it gets into PA fifty one and whose road is who's. And who's intersection.
Try to argue a ticket about that.
That would be a good argument, yeah. Um, so moving forward, um, we're now kind of into that. The general fund. Um, and so, yeah, there are some unknowns.
Yeah.
Uh, I think, uh, very, very considerate and relaxed on potential revenues and, and cautiously and anticipating expenditures appropriately. Uh, so when budget shifts and adjustments do happen, it's not going to be a, a crazy, uh, shuffle. Moving into revenues of, uh, public safety two oh five.
One quick question, Cheryl, did we collect the twenty five hundred dollars from um, Maple, Maple Ridge, did they pay?
I am not aware of that, that would be the treasurer.
As it, as it stands, I do not believe that we've, uh, approved, uh, that payment. That is an ongoing conversation, I've asked, uh, Supervisor Mail for time and consideration in that discussion, as well as Supervisor Hibner in Wilson Township, um, that have been utilizing our water infrastructure, thinking that they have free access to water. On that conversation went a little sideways where we have no mutual aid agreement, and our water and sewer customers should not be paying for subfire suppression in a municipality that have no authority to use our hydrants. Uh, that conversation is, I think, in a pointed in a right direction, we're always willing to help, but there is a cost associated that uh, that really kind of came to a head when, uh, their fire staff contacted me and let me know that they, uh, did not drain a hydrant in the middle of winter and it froze solid at the corner of thirty two and Airport Road. So figuring out a solution there, um, and figure out.
So are they paying to get?
They will pay for the labor costs as well as water consumption. I think that's a straightforward one with Maple Ridge, um, I think.
Did they leave the valve open?
No, they didn't drink, sorry, our hydrants, we only have a handful of hydrants in our system that are self-draining because of our water ta- table is so high and percolated that you can't have the bottom petcock and a hydrant open, where normally, if you had sandy soils, there are some that are self-draining, the corner of golf course road is one, for example. There are actually four in your neighborhood that ident- identified even when I was in DPW as self-draining hydrants. Um, there's not many in our system because of the perch water table, um, so you actually manually have to drain them. And so we'll figure out, every problem has.
Is that a failure out there that throws up on our part or is it somebody else?
None Wilson Township's. When you use a hydrant that you have no authority to use and don't contact anybody to drain it out and it freezes solid.
Oh, I get you.
And they go back to use it again and it's frozen solid.
So F and V go and drain them?
Yeah, so that labor cost is going to be theirs.
Why were they using it?
What? They use it every time that they want water. For, since, let's say, let's just put it in.
Just to fill up a tanker, you mean?
Can that be metered?
Yeah, if you put a meter on it.
Well, yeah.
But this has been ongoing since the water infrastructure was put in twenty years. And so I was told by their fire chief, well, this was a handshake. Oh, I shake a lot of hands. Um, but our water and sewer rate pairs shouldn't be paying for that.
Why don't you turn that handshake into a?
Yeah, originally, yeah.
So I, I, I'm going to be drafting that and giving it one to legal review. Um, it wasn't as frightening after I had the conversation with, uh, Supervisor Hibner, who was suspect at first, but I said, e- e- currently rates at eleven dollars and twenty cents a thousand gallons. Uh, you're going to pay us fifty dollars. And if you break something, you're going to pay for the labor cost to fix it.
Kind of made.
You're already getting five hundred dollars for every fire. So you're only going to have a net of forfeit, uh, with payment for water. So it's not just active fire scenes, it's anytime they have training or want to fill their tanker, they're going onto our infrastructure. Um, so it's just feeding the old mindset, figuring out a solution, moving forward. What else you got?
What are you gonna?
So we're, yeah, we're on public safety.
So how did you come up with six hundred and one thousand?
That was a three percent, uh, anticipated increase to the millage recruitment rate at one point five. I think that's what they.
So did you use the amended budget amount?
Yes.
Because I came up with a higher number.
You're doing the calculation?
Six hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty nine fifty.
Yeah.
I guess, so such seventeen is.
Three percent?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh. Um, but therein, what, I guess this was looking back at my correction, going all the way back to revenue in general, but that's probably an error on my side because I decreased that from the three percent. And I think I took, did I take on that, one percent as a rough aggregate to the activity? Uh, because we're pretty much through.
Well, we haven't settled with the county yet.
Yeah, but looking at the tail end of it, it's not going to settle out that grand.
Oh, I don't know.
It's not a huge.
I don't know, okay.
Um, so that being said, I mean, great if it is six seventeen, but.
Because you actually went down from the amended budget.
Yeah, I went down because I don't think that we're going to achieve what the amended is.
Okay.
So that's, so.
So I'm relieving it or increasing it? I mean, again, the revenue stream, I'd rather.
I stay shallow on the low side of revenue and high on the expenditure.
I agree.
It was about six seventeen threes.
But it's just an estimate, it doesn't, it's right.
Even though.
Um.
All right, so we'll just leave that on, leave that sort of on the side and.
Yeah, as a potential, I mean, if I, if I see numbers that turn, the county close out, that would dictate a different.
Right, and if we end up getting more money, we can always do an amended budget.
Of course.
And increase the revenue, yeah.
Um, I left the, the continuation of the general fund contribute, so I mean, there's not many revenue streams in this department, so you have the county uh, first responder appropriations, that is for first, uh, first responders through the, uh, county ambulance village.
Yeah, I'm trying to cut that again.
This would be one that would be great if we could get, uh.
Well, let's see, let, let's, let's see if they can actually be successful in a village. They're paying for thirty seven more years on the jail, that I think has left a disdain in everybody's mouth towards villagers. You have to, you have to appropriate.
House of your house, if you'd like.
Every time I hear something talked about, then some, there's always someone that brings up.
Yeah.
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 The school just passed theirs.
You can buy Titan heart.
Adopt an inmate, if you want.
Are they giving up the yard market?
That was a renewal of what residents don't pay, I mean.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
The, the school village was a renewal of, of what householders, you know, doesn't apply to your.
Yeah, and only penalizes people who own more than one property.
Or, yeah, or.
Somebody's bitter.
So. So just to kind of keep things moving, um, the general fund contribution is the same as this, yeah, current year. Um.
I still oppose it.
Uh, we know that you do, uh, the one uptick was the increase to the, uh, liaison officer, and that was confirmed by Sheriff Smith. Um, and that's through the general fund, and then moving into page nine of nineteen.
Well, before we leave there, the, the, it would be nice, do we have any idea of that twenty five hundred dollars from, uh, Maple Ridge? Do we have any idea how many man hours?
So, no, I don't think there's.
Tracking that.
Keep track of which calls were Maple Ridge? So we could know how many man hours.
We could do the math to figure out whether or not this is just a.
When do you think you can have it for us?
In a year, two days.
So Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday.
It, it would be sure, I, I guess the only reason why I bring it up is as a negotiation point, that if, if, that if they're giving us twenty five hundred dollars and it's costing us seven thousand dollars to do their jobs.
So, so this has been the same rate since its inception in nineteen one. Um, my thought process as to that potential of, of contract would be, okay, you have a, a base fee of twenty five hundred dollars, but then you have, uh, O and M on top of that.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's certainly one way, we'd have to keep accurate records, which, which we would anyway, through a variety of ways.
First they got there.
Yeah, and honestly, I think they paid the last day of their fiscal.
Can you give clarification exactly what you want, man hours and what else you want, the number of runs?
I would not, the number of runs and how many calls we have in a year.
Costs us to do that.
It costs a lot more than twenty five hundred dollars.
Absolutely.
So the number of rounds and man hours, though.
Yeah, yeah, that would.
Rough aggregate.
I guess and divide the man hours by paid on call and full time and.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Because there's a different.
The number of runs wouldn't necessarily matter, it would be the man hours.
And most of those.
Separated by full time.
Like when you rode area?
What?
Most of those runs would be like when you rode.
Oh, yeah, that's all it is.
Ninety, nine point.
That's, that's our auto aid.
Another, another discussion.
Yeah, land bank, which is an interesting one. Um, so any other questions about the revenue streams?
I was not talking about landing, sort of.
Uh, uh, then moving into, uh, expenditures. Um, sat down with chief last night, um, we're good on full time expenditures, I increased the paid on call um, to forty five, because what goes along with paid on call are all the other ancillaries, so then you see the uptick of all, all principal salaries and costs and labor, uh, and their, uh, one, their Blue Cross went up considerably. Um, but then also the Medicare.
But the Blue Cross went up because they've added the.
We had, yeah, not that the.
That was the big reason it went up.
Dramatically up. Um, and then going down, um, the one unknown that has potential to be an amendment later is, uh, there is, uh, we're currently working on an AFG, a FEMA AFG grant, uh, for would be following under, uh, three, three, six, eight, five, zero communications equipment, which is currently funded at ten thousand, which follows a standardized protocol to the county share program. Um, the AFG ask is for, uh, all new radios. Uh, minus, while we're still working, I've got to retract, uh, the mobile portion, so it'd be all portable radios, so that potential ten thousand can be located into uh, other expenditure lines. If we're successful with that grant. The other change, um, was getting into, uh, the shared expenses, uh, nine, six, nine, zero, zero. The other change um was getting into uh the shared expenses, uh nine, six, nine, zero, zero, zero. Uh, my arrow is not having it funded at forty thousand.
I'm sure.
Oh, yeah. Third from the bottom. Nine, six, nine, zero, 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 forty thousand dollars. That is actually a journal entry, year on journal entry uh from our auditors that, but that was also a reduction from the hundred and nine thousand.
Yeah, and I I know that that. That forty thousand, a hundred thousand and five thousand is is really an arbitrary number. It hasn't been audited.
We we do a journal entry and it's based on how much we pay for electricity for the whole building. What the internet costs, what the telephone costs. They pay their percentage. Yes.
Yeah. Um. That forty thousand is probably a whole lot more realistic than that hundred and nine.
Yeah, and that's what we already agreed on as a board. So. Uh, that was a change uh to what was uh sent. Um, but then we also increased uh professional. Well, it wasn't a a slight increase, uh, but. Uh, heard the conversation I had with chief uh professional and contractual, which is eight, oh, one, zero, zero, zero. Uh, remains at four thousand because uh his proposal of professional contractual services. Cause we're coming into a year of physicals. Um, that anticipated cost through bio care is roughly fifty five hundred dollars, but there is actually a site specific GL. Uh, so his uh request of ninety five hundred between those two GLs was met.
The one item I am concerned about is legal. I mean, we spent a lot on legal this last year.
Yeah, and so we have the potential for successful with that communications grant. Then money can be rotated in. I mean. We could. We spend a lot of money on legal, unfortunately, and you.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we got two more bills on my desk right now for legal for them.
So.
Is it five? Is that where we're?
That's five.
And we were at thirteen four already this year.
When should that be higher slightly?
Then what goes down?
Who is that? Is there? Is what is, what is the legal? This is a silly question, I suppose, but I'm gonna throw it out there. You can decipher it. Is there any legal stuff that's that's looming that's that that might be in the wind?
Well, it's hard to predict that we're gonna get my OSHA complaints and stuff like that that we have to defend against.
Alright, alright.
So.
To to my OSHA complaints without merit. Um, we had, we had several things.
Is there any way that we can get the good guys from my ocean, my ocean to come in?
No, we already.
We are, there are.
Good guys.
They've already dismissed both complaints.
No, no, no. I mean, I mean, uh, there there are basically two parts of OSHA.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I thought you had them.
Yeah.
But that was two years ago. Or three or whatever.
Yeah.
According to my calendar, it could have been ten years ago now.
Yeah, you're. Yeah, that's a, that's a valid question, Chelsea, right? Or why do we want them to come back?
Well, sometimes. The sort of the 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 good guy side of my OSHA. Can come in without any prejudice, but say you should try, you should do this, 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 and this. Problem with that, of course, potentially costs money.
So. But these costs related to the good guys of.
I'm going to, I understand. So I'm going to uh, I'm gonna pump the brakes.
I guess I feel like it's money that we can't spend on equipment if we're spending it on legal.
Yeah, reasonable.
So I'm trying to be cautiously optimistic that we won't, we're not getting, we're not in a contract here. So some of the.
I guess that's where I was coming.
The known costs aren't gonna be affiliated in into this fiscal.
Alright.
Um, they've already been worked worked out uh this last fiscal. Um, and hopefully the costs that we see this fiscal are are an outlier.
Well, hopefully we can sing kumbaya a couple of times.
Hey. All for it. Um. Equipment, uh, I think in terms of what was uh sent to you, our equipment and furniture was raised. Um, because we do have by union contract, we will have to purchase uh a couple extra long twins. And then mattresses and a new uh refiner. Um, so at the end of the day, uh, we have a net.
So you think that's enough in the equipment furniture fifteen hundred?
On the next page, uh, nine, seven, five, zero, zero, zero.
That seems kind of low, but.
It's what, six hundred? We made notes. I mean.
Like where are you getting the refiners from?
Uh, well, the discussion he had was with uh Mr. Young, I believe, on the mattresses. Um. And that puts us right there. I actually have.
Whoa, that's an expensive. Have we gone to big lots? Have we checked out big lots?
So, I mean, so let's say nine, 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 fifty. We're we're fine. Yeah. So. But therein we have some GLs. We have the potential of an increased revenue. As well. So I think for starting points, that's.
Starting furniture, we might be able to just do the two mattresses.
Oh, we know we have the the two mattresses.
But this chair might have to wait till at the end of the fiscal year to see if we have money. Yeah, yeah, okay.
It it gets us down the road and we're uh. In the black, twenty six dollars.
Ooh.
Take it where you get it. Um, moving forward, um, I will be bringing uh as business at the annual meeting in March on the twenty fifth. Uh. Regarding suit, so the BR, uh, the brownfield, uh, that all stays consistent. Those are just monies that are still. Um. In savings. Um, on our books, getting into five, nine, two. Um. In the March uh meeting, I will be bringing um. A proposal and a vote for services. Of UFS uh for. Trade analysis, um, which we talked about, which we've already talked about and anticipated. Uh, on several different fronts because she will actually have to work and part of those costs may or may not be absorbed into the USDA RV. Request because um part of the exercise that I did last year was separate out five, nine, two into water and sewer. Uh, we did not move forward with it, but part of the USDA. Um, would be those have to actually be separated out. So why not have the most uh. Knowledgeable person of our rates and our infrastructure, which would be Miss Lund with UFS. Uh, provide those services and that's who F and B is engineering is folding in. So there may not be any more additional costs. All total cost has the possible potential. To be rotated into the the USDA's. Grant moments.
And that's still looking. Better than it did last year, right?
Well, so that's, so that's the other positive about. So the difference between the state revolving fund ask versus USDA of rural development ask is that. The only difference is uh you don't have to jump through the hoops of uh the state revolving fund and hope that you get funded. Um, you can actually apply at any point in time with the USDA. The only other difference is the APR. Is uh I believe defined as a disadvantaged community at state revolving fund was one point eight seven five. Whereas it is with the USDA at two. So it's a slight off set sense splitting hairs on that. Um. And it's, it's pretty much guaranteed if they have the money, then you're, you're gonna get it. You're not competing against. Every other community. So, um, just as a rough aggregate, so that you know, in a water and sewer sales GLs. Uh, I anticipated uh at least matching the three percent that the city council. Is already pushed forward, and so that's the uptick in revenue.
Oh. These are three percent on each.
Yes. Other than that, it is pretty straightforward at this point in time with the help of um F and B. Um, we've got a pretty good grasp on uh forecasting expenditures. Um, and so we're not positive in the enterprise fund, sixty five thousand, four hundred and sixty three dollars. As for that.
What about the, maybe? Was over my head, but the transfer in from other funds, ARPA?
Yeah, I was, yeah, but we must have already.
Yeah, that that was already addressed. Um.
I don't know which GL.
Well, it's on six, it's nine, five, nine, two, six, nine, nine, zero, zero.
Revenue. Are we there?
You're all the way back at the beginning of.
No, no, no. Yeah, I don't think that transfer in from ARPAs. We've already done that. You don't want it on this proposed budget because we did it last year's.
So I can strike.
So that that was already.
Yep, that was.
Yeah. So then that reduces the.
So, yeah.
That revenue.
Yeah.
Speaking of revenue for our. For uh. Enterprise fund. How are we looking for reference to these potential future? Breaks issues that we have? Are we, we staying on top of that?
Oh, worse. I mean, so the last, the last time that we've had uh significant water loss. Um, right now we have an issue with a master meter uh that's reading at an egregious rate, but that's already uh in progress to have. Uh, the communications fixed and as long as we can quantify that error, we'll address that with the city billing. Um. With residential service breaks, um, the last time that we had any uh economic um variability, if you would. Uh, was last winter, when we actually found and coordinated out. We have the ability to narrow down, so we have three primary zones. Uh, we were able to narrow it down to uh succinct neighborhoods. And then we found two service lines uh that were openly leaking. Uh, and once those both were addressed. And all that took place inside of ten businesses. So we're able to narrow it down, not as fast as we will, but that's part of why. The big principal ask besides the service line replacement of the USDA rural development I ask. Um. Is for whole meter replacement, which has radio telemetry. So that way we eliminate the human variable. Uh, and errors. We actually at that point in time have uh economic stability as an option to look at instead of quarterly billing, monthly billing. And we have the ability as we're riding around and the crews are riding around or a sheriff's deputy cars on patrol, we can. Fix it or something on their vehicle and it picks up that signal. And so very much not as. Not as. Undependable as the technologies that the city utilizes with direct communications. We still have somewhat of an archaic, but it's more, it's the the happy medium of technologies. Of using the radio telemetry. So when somebody drives around, they can say automatically on a screen like. You you're using way too much water and red flag site. So that's another narrative side. Our water loss problem has been plagued not so much by our mains or transmissions. It's by service lines independently. And so that's the other large ticket ask of that world development ask that will be coming is. All service lines replaced with K copper from the main to the curb stop. And then full meter replacement. So we'll have basically covering all of our our known loss. And forecasting um. And a faster rate potential loss in the future. So I hope that answers.
Yeah, I just, well.
So going back then to this uh. Uh. ARPA lies that showed us a two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollar revenue. That's gonna skew.
I'll be, I'll be bringing back some recommendations.
Okay.
I think that's, that's easy enough in the enter, so the enterprise, obviously you have. If you have a greater variability.
Well, so we had sixty five thousand dollars in the black.
Yep, so we're gonna, I'll be finding this over two K, two hundred K. Um. That's not that difficult in the enterprise fund. There's some project that I I've afforded greater flexibility and depends funding that. Maybe. Not happen this year. That was my error. I don't know why I transferred that ARPA. Yeah. You know. We we received about nine hundred and nineteen thousand and change. And I will say as a board is an entity. When we look at the expenditures, we're moving down to the remaining balance of roughly twenty thousand dollars of ARPA funds. We used it in every other cat and every single category that was aligned with the utilization of ARPA monies outside of. Um, social, and we actually touched on social by funding the Alano Club uh insulation project. Uh, which I'm now sitting on the executive committee at the county level for the opioid crisis fund. Um, of which I'm trying to ascertain and allocate um annual funding out of the county. I know you're tech. I'll be on the board. So uh with that being said, um, I I will make uh. Corrections to uh five, nine, two, zero, 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 six, nine, nine, um. Uh, to the recommended budget um under this proposed, but we have. Before us, a pretty. Solid proposed budget.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't take weeks to do this.
We didn't put totals in revenues, but you.
Yeah, B S N A does like, it, I don't know why it doesn't. Proposed tallies. I I was looking through, I'm gonna actually have to call. It literally won't. Give you the proposed talents.
Do we know what that number is or no?
What?
I mean, I mean, short of. Just. Carry two, carry one.
Seven million, three hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and fifty four dollars.
I, when I try to do it on my phone, I get lost.
Of all, oh, no, revenue, I can, I can get.
That's alright, it's, it's, it's. I'm really happy to see that the tax, the the state revenue sharing.
Yeah.
They were freaking us out there a couple of years ago.
No, and actually what they found, going back to that, was that people stopped online and since this Fed's made online shopping. Uh, taxable by jurisdiction, that sales tax revenues increased. Over the years of COVID because nobody was going to stores. They're buying online.
Yeah.
So it had a negative impact to local businesses that didn't have, you know, the brick and mortar shops. But the sales tax. Did not stop rolling and so it actually increased.
We didn't have that, we'd be in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll say. Yeah, we might have to trim things down. So we've been threatening it.
Yep, but getting back to the aim, our assessing, that's the first crack uh of the rip uh from the state, so. I will bring back this uh as a a recommended budget. Uh, we currently have on the docket. Uh, a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. I don't think we need to have.
I I have not posted it or anything yet.
Yeah, we'd have until five o'clock to meet that.
Seven o'clock.
Technically seven. Um, what is everybody's feelings? We need to have.
Enforcement.
Another budget works out. We actually burned through all principle.
I don't think we do. I'm.
And then we.
She makes those changes, you're gonna send it.
I'll send it back out to everybody.
Yeah, we'll have. A vote for approval at some point.
Oh, okay.
So that's our annual meeting. So that's on the twenty fifth, we'll have, we'll be voting upon and as soon as I make these corrections. Uh, I will forward it on as a recommended budget because then there's some tweaks and we have to put a truth in taxation.
I do have to have that, yes.
Yes, that is our annual.
Five thirty or six?
Five thirty, and then we have our regular meeting at six. Budget hearings at five thirty, regular meeting will start at six.
Thank you very much for your point of clarification. I was on three PM today, so.
Five thirty, I always miss the five thirty. Highlight that I'm missing.
I'll send you an email.
Okay, so uh I I believe that concludes our budget workshops. I will make the corrections to the enterprise uh ARPA monies. Uh, and forward that on once those corrections have been accounted for. Um. I think they're getting better and better. We're down to one day.
Really? Cause we used to be five days.
So. With that being said, um. Are we all uh akin to uh canceling and not scheduling a meeting tomorrow? It also had a tentative date of the thirteenth. I say we'll scratch that if we need to call a special meeting uh posted a uh. We'll call a special meeting if anything else comes up.
For the city, for water.
Yeah, I would uh, I would just earmark the fact that as it currently stands, we're concluding our budget and coming into our new fiscal. Uh, effective March uh twenty, at our annual meetings. Uh, with that being stated, this is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment uh online. Uh, please use the bottom task bar under the ellipsis. And uh raise your hand or send a a message so that we can a- address your comment. Again, this is the uh last opportunity for public comment. If you have any public comment, please use the bottom task bar. Under the ellipsis of more uh to raise your hand or send a message so that we can hear your comment. Any public comment in person? Seeing none. Is there anything for the discussions for the good of the order?
I I just wanna say, I'm hoping that the planning commission would get moving on the CIP.
Yes, I need to. I'm, yeah, henceforth, that's why I need some help because I'm wearing too many hats.
Who's on the capital improvement plan?
It'd be Michelle, Russ.
You pulled that back.
So, well, and then, but then this is what I introduced to the planning commission is. So, well, now, but then this is what I introduced to the planning commission as two members, because the CIP committee could actually be interfaced directly with, and so that will be a conversation on the.
Okay.
Um, we'll keep get that moving and hopefully in this.
If that's gonna be talked about, then let me know.
Well, yeah, and so I've already introduced it and looked for two volunteers from the planning commission, and when you're looking for volunteers on a volunteer commission. Um, there were some crickets, and so I was gonna be bringing some things back to them, and hopefully we can uh. Get two appointees to interface, and that way you have a full committee, because then you have institutional based on the board and the planning commission in one fall except. Um, anything else for the good of the order? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who who's making the motion?
Yeah, which one of you guys? Uh, we got uh trustee laughing on the motion support by trustee Reinhardt, any further discussion?
I always thought the chair could straighten during the meeting, doesn't appear like that.
No. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at three fifty eight, thank you.